There'll be another day and another opportunity to use them, so that's not such a concern. The core question I wanted us to explore is the question I've put up on the screen now for us to look at. And once we have begun streaming this session, which I think we already are, then we will take the title screen away in a moment and perhaps invite people to begin with simply their answer to that question. And then I'll come back to that question at some point just to unpick one particular aspect of it that we might, we might wish to consider. So let me come off from the, the screen. And lovely to have in the middle of Yom Kippur afternoon, over fifty-five at the moment, different screens participating. And I was very grateful for and struck by the number of comments that went into the, the chat room, the chat forum of people who were enjoying the additional service that we've just had. And so I wanted to begin with perhaps an opportunity for people who wish to, to comment on that. But I'm also conscious that some people are joining us who might not have been part of that session. And so I don't want us to become too stuck in what happened in the previous hour or so. But allow us to, to share a little bit of some new thoughts going forward about this particular day and what it means to us. So I'm going to invite if you feel impassioned enough by anything or brave enough or moved enough, whatever it should be, to unmute yourself and you'd like to contribute to what I hope will be a discussion, not a monologue, then it would be lovely to hear you for these first few minutes. And then we'll perhaps move forward into an exploration of that question that I had on screen just a couple of minutes ago. So if you would like to speak, then please unmute yourself. And when I see you, then I can invite you to, to make your comment. I'm conscious we have quite a large number of people here. So we just need not to all unmute at once, but equally I'd like someone to unmute right now.
I didn't see the question. I didn't see the question.
Okay, so the, the question really was how is this day? And I'd explain for reasons later, it's got a small d as well as a capital D on day. How is this day different from other days? And if you see a resonance in the framing of the question, then you'd be exactly right. We're borrowing from Pesach and Manish Tana. Manish Tana hayom hazeh mikol hayamim was the question. How is this day different from all other days? So if anyone would like to, to pick up on that, having been through the experience of the service, then please do. Otherwise, like a rabbi can, I can talk for the next hour.
Yeah. Could, could I, can I make a comment, Richard?
Please do.
Yeah, yeah. I thought, leading up to this day, I thought it was going to be very, very hard because usually the day in synagogue flies past very quickly. And it's, it's pretty effortless really to spend the day in synagogue. So I was not looking forward to today, but I'm finding it just as engrossing and just as, you know, just as involving as ever. So thank you for that. It's, it's really been, it's proving to be a very good day.
Thank you Judith, and I, I hope.
Can I say something?
So let me, let me come on. Yes, indeed you can.
Yes, this day is different from other days because not only that we are completely separated from everyday things of life, but because we are able, because of this coronavirus, we are able to come together with different congregation and share. And it is, to me, it is a blessing in disguise. Although we are coming before the eternal one and making our petition to him and asking for his compassion and mercy. But because we can join with other congregation as well and share with others as well. This, this is what makes this day different to me.
Indeed. Thank you, Yvonne. And you've, you've gone into that answer, which particularly about why is this day with a capital D different? I did see a few other people waiting to, to speak.
Michael Pickett, I think, indicated earlier.
Yes, as you know, the Torah was edited in the sixth century, before the common era in Babylon. And, and that was the time when the Greeks were writing their great tragedies like Oedipus and Antigone by, and Oedipus at Colonus by Sophocles. And it was also about the time that Buddha appeared on the scene. So it looks as if what happened in the sixth century BCE was a great, Karl Jaspers, existentialist, called it the axial age. It was, it was the beginning of moral civilization. And there's a great deal on Yom Kippur, we experience what the Greeks called catharsis. That is the purging of emotion, the outpouring of negative emotion and tragic feeling because we're witnessing the tragedy of Oedipus or Antigone. And in the same way, on Yom Kippur, we're witnessing and sharing all our tragedies collectively. So I see it as a, a play, a ritual, celebrating the, the virtue of emotional honesty and emotional and existential insight. We, but we put it in the plural instead of saying I have sinned. We say we have sinned because we're acting not as a chosen individual, but as a chosen people with a special contract with God.
Thank you, Michael. And, and you've touched on some of the aspects of the liturgy that we've been reading so far in both the morning and, and the additional services and what we've been experiencing. I know Jane Clark, you had also unmuted, so perhaps I can invite you to comment at this point.
Well, yeah, I mean, apart from the obvious thing of saying thank you for inviting PWPJ C. It kind of invoked in a strange way that I wasn't expecting, a little bit of nostalgia. Because what it reminded me of was the, perhaps not so much the additional, as the afternoon services of my youth in Reform synagogues. And it's so it felt a bit topsy-turvy, but that was okay because, you know, the whole year is topsy-turvy.
Isn't it just? Yeah. Thank you. And if there are any other, Donovan, Don.
Sorry, I'm unmuted by mistake. Sorry, apologies.
That's all right. I was hoping. Okay, so a, a number of people, okay, so we've got a couple more. Liz first and then Simon, if you wanted to as well.
Yes, sorry, I, I should have done it earlier. Yes, I, I would agree with Yvonne and, and Michael as well. You know, this, because we're at home, we've been given this opportunity with Zoom. So we're able to connect to many other people that we might not have been otherwise able to do. So in a way, it, it's been a very good experience on this holy day and this very important day. If that makes any sense.
It does indeed, Liz. Thank you. Thank you. Simon.
For those of us who, who have experienced the Yom Tov and the Chagims numerous times, more times than some just want to remember. The days don't seem that different because people sit in the same seats and you greet the same people. Thank God you're able to greet the same people. So it can seem very, very similar. Although only it happens once a year, it can seem very, very similar. But you, you ask why is today different from other days? I, as other people have touched on, the way, the format of, of what we've done has made it very, very different. But, but also that, that additional service, I found took me on a journey that I hadn't been on before. My, the services for me are always a, a sat nav, a journey for me. And whether I follow the, the master or not, it's my, 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 my mind and my, my heart is, is somewhere not necessarily focusing on the prayer book. But that, that, that additional service, I found took me somewhere where I'd never been before. And I think it was probably one of the most emotive, motive periods I've had during, during a Chagim that I can remember. So thank, thank you for, for that. And thanks Pete Tobias and all that, that put it together. It's made, it's made my Yom Kippur very, very different. So small d, big D. It's very, very different and that, that I have very shared.
Thank you, Simon. And Tony Kirstein.
Yeah, I agree with him about that, 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 that presentation. That really was amazing. And the other thing I'd like to say is that there's been advantages in going on Zoom and there's advantages of being in a synagogue. And I'm just wondering if in the future, when we are back in the synagogue, we'll be able to do some kind of hybrid version, where we can have a screen, a screen and a, I don't know if it's possible, because we've done it, we've done it with the, with, with, what do they call it, funerals? So I'm just wondering if it's possible to do a high, be a high possibility of hybrid version of it.
I think you're highlighting that how we move into whatever the settled new future will be remains an open topic of conversation, doesn't it? You know, early in this pandemic, people were talking about what is the new normal? And if anything, we're learning that the new normal is that there is no normal. When we settle to one normal, it shifts to another normal. And, and therefore what we have to be constantly doing is accepting that there will be constant change. And therefore, the new normal is for us to be showing how adaptable we are. But let me bring in a couple more people. Thank you, Tony. Linda, I've got you first, I think.
Yeah, for, for us, it's a combination of the two synagogues. It's also a combination of being with our eldest son, who's a member of LLs. And for us in Bristol, it's a pleasure to be together as a family as much as we can be. On Yom Kippur, it's certainly different. But we've not seen each other properly for a long, long time. And it's a way of being close and it's a very special day anyway. So thank you for enabling this to happen.
Thank you, Linda. And I did see, oh Hannah Tate.
Hello. I just want to say this is my first proper Yom Kippur. And just thank you so much for the services. I know it's slightly different in the fact that we're not in the synagogue. But actually, I was just saying to Jeremy that it's been nice in a way because I feel like everything's a bit slowed down. So I've had more time to reflect and more time to think about what everything means personally to me. And yeah, just thank you. It's been a really eye-opening experience, really special personal experience for me this year.
Thank, thank you Hannah. And, and you and Jeremy as well. It's nice to hear. And your comment is, is mirrored by Annabelle's in the chat, which is saying it's my first time experiencing this. And I'm assuming you're meaning Yom Kippur and I'm grateful for the opportunity. And I, I think some of us, it reminds me how, how much different people are coming from different starting points. And therefore their expectations are so different. And that's something we all will do well to acknowledge is that everyone is, is having a different experience depending on where it is they're approaching from. But thank you Hannah. Jo Twymon.
I, I think my slightly less positive comment for me is that the current situation means we don't have a physical place, which means it's harder to carve out the physical time to engage with Yom Kippur. So the children still went to school this morning. Because Anthony's been off with COVID so much, he felt he had to go to work. So his students didn't miss out on an education. So I'm alone in the house trying to engage, which is quite a novel, an not particularly fulfilling experience this year. So I'm looking forward to when we can have community in a physical space as well as a virtual space.
Thank you, Jo. And I'm sure you voiced something that many other people are, are sharing that feeling of. I guess one of my senses at this time is that we have to, to almost adopt a, a mode that was really by the, talk to us by the rabbis of a couple of centuries after the, the temple was destroyed, who gradually realised that yes, we want to talk about the, the coming of the Messiah. But the best thing to do is to, to keep it in the far distance and not to say it's going to come tomorrow, not to get our hopes up that it's going to come next month. Because then you get to tomorrow or you get to next month and you're disappointed again. And when it comes, it comes. And in that sense, I, I feel that we have to see a return to physical in-person services in that kind of mode. We, we shouldn't hope for it to come at a specific time because we might well set ourselves up just to be disappointed. When it's ready to come, it will come. I was noticing, yes, Sharon Law has also said she'd like to say something. And then I'll come back to a couple of comments in the, the chat as well.
The additional service that we've just experienced was indeed very moving. I like the storybook approach, to be honest. And was enjoying looking at the pictures and sometimes not looking at the screen, but joining in the song, which was very nice to be able to immerse in a service, but not necessarily need to look at the screen. I've also found that in general, the whole way with the real deep soul and feeling. And I do understand what Jo's saying as well. However, I do feel that somehow or another, and it's beautiful, these communities being together, that we really do seem to have got quite, I've forgotten what the Hebrew word for it is, but the, a tradition together that actually does connect us when we actually can't connect physically in person. And people have, I, I myself find, like a few others have said, that my thoughts drifted at times, but it actually meant that I could just reflect at whatever point it was and be with that. And no one's going to notice because I'm at the end of a screen. But it means I can engage with the day in a meaningful way. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Thank you. And we've been picking up comments about how people in, in different countries. Jane has added that her daughter in Germany has joined us. We had guests from other countries last night in our service from, amongst other places, Bulgaria as well. And these sorts of opportunities are facilitated by the technology. So as ever, it, it has its pros and its cons. I'm, I'm not seeing anyone else at the moment unmuting themselves ready to speak. So if I may come back to the question of Manish Tana, I just wanted to draw our attention to that, that key word, Nish Tana. Because it's a, it's a curious one to come across in this setting. But it's one that speaks a lot to this time and this season. We hear it as Nish Tana. And there's a transposition of two letters in there, the Shin and the Taf are transposed. And so what originally it probably was, but that was a bit of a tongue twister, was it would have been Nit Shana. It's from a linguistic form of Nit Pael or Nit Palel, which then when you get certain key letters, you get a, a transposing of those letters. And so if we go back to what it probably originally was, which was Nit Shana, you suddenly experience or realise that we have that word Shana in there. And the, the word Shana is a word for, that we know now for the year, for the greeting we give each other and Rosh Hashanah. But actually, the, the root of the word comes from a verb that means to change. And so sometimes it can mean to repeat and other times it can mean to differ. And so the opportunity that this Shana offers us, five, seven, eight, one, is to be different from the way we were in five, seven, eight, oh, or previous years. The word itself raises this question, which is the question that should be at the front of our minds. Are we going to repeat last year in the way we go about things? Or are we going to make this year different from last year? And that of course takes us into the themes of these high holidays, which are to do with whether we are simply repeating or whether we are through our teshuvah, through our return, through our reflection, through our self-exploration at this time, whether we are paving the way to make this year that has just started a better year than the year we had previously. And so in one sense, when we ask Manish Tana hayom hazeh mikol hayamim, we are asking a question of how will we move forward from where we were to where we want to be? Or will we repeat things? So that's one aspect of the, excuse me, the, the, the question itself. And then our discussion has already begun to, to pick up on another aspect of the discussion, of the, the, the question, which is, are we talking about the day of atonement as a day with a capital D being different from the other days with a small letter D? But also how are we comparing this day of atonement with a capital D from previous days of atonement? And so some of the conversation that we've already had and some of the opinions we've already had have been highlighting some aspects of that. And a few of the comments that have just come in, in the, the chat while I've been talking have highlighted some of the difficulty of this time. Yes, we are closer to the washing machine. We're closer to the kitchen. We have other people in our home who may not be observing Yom Kippur. All those points are very true and they make this again a very different day. And, and so what we're finding ourselves with is yet another new experience, which is not necessarily a good thing or a bad thing, but it's just another new experience with all the emphasis on perhaps we're getting too many of them. And so part of what we need to consider is how we keep ourselves and each other together. And so perhaps at this point, I want to come back and dwell for a couple of moments on something else I prepared for our service this, this morning. And so some people will have seen it, but other people won't. But let me see if I can bring it up and give you an opportunity to, to have a look at it. So this was a passage to reflect the fact that this Yom Kippur is, is very different from other yamim kippurim. In that we are, as Susan has, has just added, requiring more effort of ourselves as individuals to be part of this Yom Kippur. And so the prayer was attempting to recognise some of that in the beginning part and then as it moves on into the second phase. I'm just wondering if anyone would feel happy to unmute themselves and to read the first half of this prayer, which is currently on the screen now. If there's a willing volunteer.
Eternal God, rock of our lives, we turn to you on this day of atonement, not only seeking forgiveness for our sins, but also in need of refuge and encouragement as we navigate our way through a uniquely challenging time. Physically distanced from each other on this day, we yet feel an intimacy afforded by seeing other faces and homes during this day of repentance and prayer. It would be all too easy for each human being to focus only on themselves at this time. Our Judaism and sense of community this day takes us beyond ourselves to consider others.
And if we move forward.
Do you want me to continue?
If you're happy to, Jane, that would be lovely.
May the need to protect ourselves be encouraged by the urge to reach out to others with kindness and compassion to forge and renew connections. May our impulse to judge others be tempered by the reminder that we are all struggling to cope. And at times we do so better and at other times not so well. May we be caring and supportive to those around us who might show their struggle in ways we find challenging. May the memory of those who died during this crisis inspire us. May our knowledge of people who've been ill and have recovered strengthen our resolve to speak and act responsibly. May our teachings, especially that this too will pass, help us to see beyond this time to a better future. Chazak, chazak, v'nit chazek. Let us be strong and strengthen each other. Amen.
Thank you, Jane. So let me come off that. And again, invite some commentary action to that as a set of thoughts, which I hope fit in with this day and what it's asking of us. And whether any senses or any new thoughts have come into mind as we heard Jade, Jane reading that prayer to us just now. Sharon once more, and then Tina and David, and then Jenny Aston. I'll come to others who I haven't seen yet, but Sharon first.
For me, that additional bit of the prayer, as it came up on screen and has been read again now, is just taking me to something I've been thinking and putting through on my own media recently, which is for me, kind of at the start of all this, there was hashtag be kind, hashtag care, people caring for one another. Absolutely in LL's community, that's still happening. And people are looking after each other. I know phone tree still continues for those that need it. And lots of brilliant volunteering going on. But I'm now talking wider society and wider community. So I guess for me, it was thinking, how can we reach out to really try and help our own local communities remember that we're all in our own struggles, the people that are protesting. Remember that we're all in our own struggles, the people that are protesting. There's a genuineness to some of what they are saying, while at the same time we need to also keep and keep people safe. But it's a juggling act, but it's about respecting that. And for me, it was thinking about how can I reach out to people within my own local community or people locally? Um, and people reach out to to me the other way around. Um, as something maybe new for the start of our new year.
Thank you, Sharon. And I think in that sense, this is very timely. Yes, Tina and David.
Yes, I was thinking reading that prayer just now. Um, I think this way of having our services, especially today, where I'm seeing people come up on their screens but can't actually physically be with them or really or have a conversation. Um, we can just catch up in a small way that what we would do if we were in synagogue together. This has made me focus even more on other people and being in touch and staying in touch and how important it is to all of us during this time. To be mindful of others in every way and to keep those connections going all through this. Um, I think that's very important because we are not seeing each other physically.
Hmm.
So we're we're losing out on that opportunity. Um, even though these services um do make, well, for me, I am much more focused on the the liturgy, the meaning and the whole service itself. Maybe than I am when I'm in synagogue and there are lots of distractions and and whatever. This is a very focused way of being part of a service. So um, but it does make me think of other people as I'm seeing them and thinking about them and maybe not been in touch for a while. So that's something I will endeavour to do much more in this new year.
Thank you, Tina. And and yes, I a part of my kit now for services, uh which was never part of it before, is to have a pencil and pad by my side because I often find myself wanting to write names down of people I need to phone or speak to because this format doesn't allow it. We come to to Jenny first and then Tommy, please.
Hello, sorry about the silly profile picture.
That's okay, Jenny.
Um, I, that prayer really made me think of a discussion that we had last year. And uh one of the things that someone else from the community in it said was that Yom Kippur always feels like its own special place in time. And when you're there, you have feelings that you have every year. And you could almost be at any point in your life. And it I think she she talked about it as its own parallel universe. But I, for me, especially this year, it just feels like a refuge. Um, very much like you said in in the prayer and I, and partly what I want to say is thank you because it's so special that you can achieve that without being in the familiar buildings with the familiar people. And just, you know, with a, and and I don't know a lot of people who are in the discussion today and it still feels like a special place in time and familiar and like home. So thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. And again, a a member of the community who's joining from a different part of the the country. Again, so the the distance is being overcome, which is which is wonderful. Tommy.
Yeah, I think I think that having everyone here from so many different places has been really powerful. Um, and I guess like that that's just has just been lovely to see so many different people um that wouldn't normally be here. Um, that said, I'm finding this day so much more tough than I would normally do. Um, I'm finding it really difficult just to focus and um because I feel like when we're all together, all chanting at the same time, there's sort of this community around you, keeping you on on task, keeping you going. And here I feel so distracted by just everything that's around me. Um, finding it really tough with my fast as well. Um, but yeah, I don't know. I don't, I'm I'm gonna try and stay in and try try and keep going, but it's it's I'm finding it a lot more difficult this time of year. Not to mention in where I'm living at the moment, there's people around going about their daily business. So it's just a little tougher than than normal.
Thank you, Tommy, for for naming something which I think is there for for a lot of people. Um, is is the difficulty of maintaining the fast and in in many ways, I think um we have a legitimacy in our progressive Judaism, in our liberal Judaism to perhaps highlight um that and if if time allows, then before we finish in about fifteen minutes' time or so, um I might read what I didn't read this morning, uh which touches precisely on that. Um, but I certainly sympathise. And I know I've I've been in the fortunate position with the family around me to that we've been talking about this in in anticipation of this day. And outing some of the the feelings that were coming up in the chat about what it's like to have um you know, the kettle in the same room as you kind of thing, which is what is the case. I'm I'm in the lounge. The rest of the family are in the kitchen, if like doing the tech part. Um, and that's that's also a very different feeling. You know, you don't want to be there with with those reminders on a fast day. So it it's creating its own challenges and maybe maybe there's something, you know, divine in the in the way we are being challenged differently by being taken out of our comfort zone this year. If it isn't too funny to talk about that for those who've been to Yom Kippur in synagogue, there there is a rhythm, there is a pattern, there is a routine. And maybe being shaken out of it is something we might look back upon with gratitude because it has given us, uh forced us into um reconsidering what we sometimes can go through on semi-automatic pilot. Perhaps. So Tommy, thank you very much. I'm just wondering if there were others who would like to contribute their own thoughts, their own experience, their own where they are. Jane, you've raised your hand again, so happy to come.
Yeah, uh the bit of that passage that I found difficult to read, I mean, it was really unseen, of course, I didn't know what was coming. Um, was the bit about people who died in the the pandemic. Um, and my own parents have died in the last four years, which was obviously pretty traumatic for me. Um, and the thought has very much been in my mind that had they lived, this would have killed them.
Hmm. Yeah, I can associate with that. Um, and and it is such a painful um experience. And in some ways grateful that some people who have died of natural or other causes um have not had to live through this experience is something we've also talked about. And I think that's what you're alluding to, Jane. Yeah. Yeah, I I I share that sense. Yes, someone else was just, oh, Liz, I said I.
Yes, could I just add something? While while we're sort of s- stuck at home at the moment, um or you know, or we can't go out a great deal. We can become intolerant of other people, so we and other people express their coping i- in in all sorts of ways and that you, we have to accept o- o- other people's needs and try and be kinder, be kinder as people.
Thank you. You're speaking very much to something I'll I will come back to in. But but thank you so much. And Yvonne, you uh would like.
Um, the part of the prayer that's sort of bring bring emotional feeling to me is about people that died during the pandemic. Um, my husband died just on the day when the lockdown. And I have to say, the community has been a rock for me. And I reached to the state, it's reached to the stage where the community, although we could not meet and they could not come to visit me, but through Zoom, they are there um on a Tuesday, morning, Tuesday afternoon, Wednesday afternoon. And they do not leave me to get depressed or anything like that. And um I will get phone calls as well. So um I look at the community these days as not just a community, but a family that really care for each other. And meeting like yourself and your congregation and other congregation, it made me realise what a wonderful family we have got. You know, because we can share with each other and listening to each other's thought, it brings encouragement. And it's give me the strength to go forward.
Thank you, Yvonne, and um I wish you as is traditional uh long life and and good health and many good memories too. And I I noted that while you were speaking, Ellen also contributed in the chat that um she is praying more every day partly because her mum died in April. And so extend those greetings and condolences to you, Ellen, as well. Um, and I think all of us are gathered this year mindful of those um who have died in recent months, especially um in or in a related way due to the the coronavirus itself. Partly again because of the absolutely abnormal, unique experience of not being able to visit people if they were in hospital or in care homes and so on. And again, how life has changed from what we accepted as normal to what we have to adjust to now. So I do wish you well, Yvonne, and Ellen and others. Uh, and a couple of people have commented about how lockdown and isolation have led them to explore faith a little more. Um, to make time for uh this day and for other parts of Jewish practice so that they can become part of life. And if anything, I would hope that that is a um a a purpose that our communities serve is to provide comfort to those who are in need of comfort and and kindness for those who uh who need that too. And that was a a a theme of a message I wanted to share before we close. But I do see Stuart um and Ruth, I think you were just looking to say something. There's time. We have time for a little more if people want to contribute.
I'm sorry, I I wasn't actually, which that was a slip of the hand, but um I I, you know, I'm I'm always conscious of compassion for members and all people during this time. And I'd um, you know, remark I've remarked many times about the kindness that people have shown through this, through this last few months. And I hope that when and if we come out of it, which I'm sure we will, um that that kindness will come through to the future and um you know, and and perhaps relate to some difference in people's values.
I just wanted to say, Richard, that in in uh the word prayer in Google searches is one of the uh highest words being searched at the moment all around the world.
I think that's proving very true and and it's a fascinating reminder. Um, perhaps of where we have come to take things for granted, haven't we?
Yeah, hun- hundreds of mil- there's been hundreds of millions of searches on the word prayer on Google searches.
Yeah, thank you, Marco.
Hmm.
And Tony, you wanted a.
Yeah, um I think one of the things that um I've noticed, people people often even before COVID, they lived in isolation and and people ve- very rarely visited. Now we've got something like Eleven's is, which which um L L's does. Um, I don't go through it because I don't need it, but i- i- it's very useful for people who um, I will, maybe we'll in the future, but the point point is people are accessing something they never had before. They're they're actually linking with people and talking with people. So so they're in in some ways they're less isolated than they were before. And it's something we can hang on to, perhaps even when it's all over.
I I think um I think back to a number of families who said they've had more conversations with their international family through this period than they've had in the last several years in terms of making um Zoom or WhatsApp groups and so on and so forth, so that they can actually um have those conversations and and realise that we we can and should be in touch more than perhaps we we were used to being. And again, that comes back to, I think, a sense that as a last couple of generations, um we've probably become uh more sucked into the idea that life will be lived at its natural course. And that that is the norm and that is what everyone can expect. And really, it was not that long ago when humanity felt more fragile and therefore made more of every moment. And so perhaps we do need to return, if you'd like, to that value, which is of of appreciating that we don't always, we can't always guarantee there will be a tomorrow and a tomorrow and a tomorrow. So therefore we have to great make the most of today. Um, Robert Hurst on a slightly different tack is is highlighting that to respond to those searches, Tony, that you you uh Ma- that Marco mentioned, sorry. Uh, to respond to those searches is that we um we need to be uh making ourselves and our progressive Judaism more visible and more findable through those searches so that people can benefit from the the joy of community. And I think, Jane, you've you voiced a point about whether the virus will lurk around and uh as you've put it, pick off older people indefinitely. I think the reality is that we know with any virus that does not have a cure, that you have to learn how to contain as best you can that virus and build treatments and that's very much something that uh we we hope that the scientists will gradually get better at. And we too will get better at living with something when we've had more experience of doing that. I just want to finish um with a short reading and then I'm going to um share something, but Jane, I appreciate your worry and it's obviously resonating with other people. And I think we have to make sure that we are part of the uh the prevention of that happening um by our own care, our own disciplines, our own being willing to, um as Linda, as you touched on earlier, go without seeing close members of the family. Because there is a higher priority, which is about saving life. And and we should be doing what we can. But for us going forward, a brief couple of moments, if I may. Yesterday, I I posted a message onto our Facebook group to support those people who ought not to fast on Yom Kippur for one or other set of reasons. This particular post was to do with those who have eating disorders. But in reality, we know that there are very many reasons why people should not fast on Yom Kippur. True, the Halacha lists abstaining from eating and drinking as two of the privations for Yom Kippur. The others are we're not supposed to wash or anoint our body in oil. Um, we're not supposed to have sexual relations and we're not supposed to eat leather shoes. Those, I think, being a particular luxury item that we um were discouraged from. But of course, at this this year, we all have an additional privation afflicting us, which is the plague of coronavirus. And so maybe we ought as liberal Jews to reconsider the question that is asked in our Haftarah, which is what does this fast that we are keeping, what is God looking for? In other words, what will show us, other people, and what will show God that we've taken the lessons from this day that we need to learn from this day of atonement? And I suspect the answer to the question lies not in what we do or we don't do today. The answer lies, as our Haftarah pointed us to, whatever still applies in this year is that we have to respond in our daily life to how we should be, not just. to how we should be, not just on this day of Yom Kippur. My friend and colleague Rabbi Rabbi Robin Ashworth Steen told recently of how someone at a leisure centre where her son was swimming took the time to come quietly across to near where she had sat to watch the lesson. The person sat at a suitable physical distance to her, then glanced across and quietly said, I know this is a difficult time for us and we can't always notice what changes have been made. This area of seating is currently closed to the public, so would you mind please moving to the other seats over there? Rabbi Robin said that the gentleness of the message and the way it was delivered almost made her cry. And of course she moved, having thanked the person first. It took a moment or two more to not embarrass someone else in public by shouting across from a distance. It took a few seconds more to explain gently rather than brusquely. Maybe what this pandemic is teaching us is that we all have those extra seconds or minutes. The world doesn't need more angry people, even if we're voicing anger as the result of our fears and our anxieties. This world desperately needs more gentle, loving kindness. So we can choose life, as our Torah portion this morning urged us. Our liturgy itself urges the phrase gentleness that transcends force. Perhaps we, all of us in this session, sharing this day can be part of a kindness revolution. I'm going to end this session here so we can have another short break. And in just a few minutes at two thirty, there will be a study session uh beginning and that provides us all with an opportunity to um either stay on this link and join student Rabbi Nicola Feuchfang on the Book of Jonah. Or if you wish to, to go to um the different link that has been provided, I hope, for everyone. Which would take you to the meditative service for Yom Kippur, which is being led by Sharon Law, who was part of our discussions just now. So please feel free to join one of those two sessions. Um and then at three thirty, Rabbi Monique Mayer will be taking us through some Musa insights into Teshuvar. So I'm going to end this particular session. Again, if you're staying here, do leave your cameras on if you wish to and your uh your connections on. Um but we're going to end now and take a short pause.